Today is Monday, March 10, 2025. It's 5:30 PM. And welcome to today's work session. First up on the agenda, we're not the Brian McCain, he's out sick, and we have the lobby sub-date with Glenn O'Meara. Glad to catch you on board, Gil, if you're there.
Oh, good evening, everyone. City Council members, Mayor's Office. I'm gonna be sitting in for Gil tonight, Ryan Romero with Capital Success Group. We just have a couple of updates that we'd like to talk about. First up is Senate Bill 25004, Regulating Childcare Center Fees. This is a bill that Counselor Martinez flagged for us. It's made it through the Senate, and it is awaiting its first committee hearing in the House, which is set for tomorrow upon adjournment. Next up, House Bill 251147, Fairness and Transparency in Municipal Courts. This bill has cleared the House chamber and is now awaiting its first committee in the Senate. Next up is House Bill 251206, Extreme Indifference Offenses Not Causing Death. This is a bill that we spoke about last week. We had expected it to have its first committee hearing this week, but it has been pushed. It is now scheduled for March 19th, next Wednesday. So those are some updates on the stuff, on the bills that we have been tracking for the city, and I'd like to mention a few new bills, if I may. First up is House Bill 251286, Workplace Temperature Safety and Injury Prevention Act. This bill requires employers to implement protections for workers who are exposed to extreme hot and cold temperatures at the worksite, including temperature mitigation measures, rest breaks, and temperature-related injury and illness prevention plans. It would require employers to provide shade or shelter in extreme conditions, develop temperature-related safety plans for job sites, and make water available for workers in an effort to prevent illness like heat stroke, hypothermia, and frostbite. The bill defines the trigger temperatures as a low of 30 degrees Fahrenheit and a high of 80. We flagged this one. It was actually Brian McCain that flagged this for us. We're hearing a lot of pushback from local governments and entities that represent them, and employers as well. They think this bill is somewhat redundant, that most employers do this, and it would be quite the burden to track all of this stuff and cost to the employers. So we are, we're sensing a lot of pushback, a lot of opposition to this bill as of right now. That's awaiting its first committee hearing in the House. Next up is House Bill 251273, Residential Building Stair Modernization. Multi-family residential buildings exceeding three stories are currently required to have at least two separate stairways accessible from all points on each floor to provide multiple egress routes during emergencies. This bill would require that Pueblo amend its building code by December 1, 2027 to allow up to five-story multi-family residential buildings to be served by a single exit, provided they meet specific fire safety criteria outlined in the bill. Proponents of this legislation argue this change will facilitate urban infill development, lower construction costs, and improve the feasibility of larger family-sized housing units. This bill is scheduled for its first committee hearing next Tuesday, March 18th. A couple of things of note. The Colorado Professional Firefighters are opposed to the bill, citing their concern with the fire danger. The bill was, and a very similar bill was run last year, and it was killed in its committee. So it's unclear. They have changed a few things in this new bill, but we still expect similar opposition to last year. But that is one that we will be tracking. And then last but not least for me, just an update on a bill that Counselor Flores mentioned last week. House Bill 251174, Reimbursement Requirements for Health Insurers. This bill would cap how much health insurance companies can pay doctors and hospitals for people on state employee and small business health plans. It stops providers from charging patients extra beyond their normal copays, deductibles, or coinsurance. Insurance companies must share cost and quality information with regulators. The state would track how much money these limits save and use part of the savings for healthcare funds. It would also fund a study to see if similar cost limits could work for school, college, and local government employee health plans. This one's scheduled for second reading in the House tomorrow. It was a bit surprising that this one made it out of its committee. We are expecting this to die in the Senate. In fact, the Chair of Senate, the Senate Health Committee has promised that he will kill it. And as of right now, the Hospital Association is opposed to it. But we are hearing that they're working on a compromise bill with Senator Mulca that will incorporate much of what's in this current bill, just with a different funding mechanism. And that should be introduced as a late bill sometime in the next couple of weeks. So happy to get any more information on that one. But that is our report for this evening, and we'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Counselor Maestra, please.
Who's the sponsors to the single exit bill? Who are the sponsors? Like this, the single exit from the multi-family? Five-story multi-family building?
Just one second, Counselor Maestra. Let me pull that up. So the sponsors are Representative Stephen Woodrow, Andrew Basenekker, and in the Senate, new Senator, Senator Ball.
Since last year?
I believe Basenekker and Woodrow were from last year, the House sponsors, yes.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Martinez.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Hey, Ryan, I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about legislation around paying for state college athletes?
Thank you, Counselor Martinez. We're aware of that piece of legislation. It's not something that we have tracked closely. I'd be happy to, we could put together a report for you and send it to the council, or we could report on it next Monday if you'd like.
It's just weird coincidences because CSU Pueblo is in the House, and I'm wondering how that bill is going to affect CSEP.
Thank you. Yeah, we'd be happy to do a little bit of research on that and get back to you with that.
Great. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Counselor Maestra, please.
No, thank you.
Anybody else for good? All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Romero.
Thank you.
We're good. Next up on your agenda, we've got I'm CEO, CSU Pueblo Development Project. Garrison Ortiz, Vice President of University Operations. Andrew Arnold, Feonan Percival, Pioneer Development Company. Carolyn White, it's a 15-minute presentation. I'm gonna try to skip to the clock if we can. Thank you, Mr. Garrison Ortiz.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gorman and City Council from Community Graham. And thank you for hosting us this evening. We're eluded to be here. We'll get on to the presentation quickly, this is time. But at first, I would like to introduce our President, Rico Mun, if you'd like to say a few words.
Good evening, councilmembers. I could just yell. My name is Rico Mun. I'm the president for CSU Pueblo. Wanted to be here tonight and also just introduce myself. I know a couple of you who have been connected, or used to several of you. I wanted to put a name to the face. So I'm excited for you to hear this presentation from our team. I'm not part of that presentation, but since I was here, I wanted to make sure I stopped and said hello.
Thank you. We're going to hand this presentation over to Andrew Arnold and Carolyn White, two of the best when it comes to development projects. Sure that we'll have nothing short of a transformation project through the season.
Hello, everyone. Good to be here with you. My name is Andy Arnold. I'm the principal and founder of Pioneer Development Company. I may have seen you before in some virtual meeting calls. I do a lot of work with the Pueblo Urban Rural Authority. And we're excited to present this project to you tonight, being led by Garrison Ortiz and our development team. There's been a lot of minds that went into this concept plan. And so I want to run through what this concept is for the university, the ways that we're trying to approach funding this concept. And I'm gonna hand it off to Carolyn at the end, so that you, in case you have any questions about the funding mechanisms and our public finance strategy to make this project feasible. So we have the door of the project overview, the conceptual development plan, the public finance strategy, and then hopefully have some time for discussion. First, I want to walk you through what has gone into identifying specific areas around the CSU Pueblo campus that we've targeted for development. Again, I have to emphasize that this is a big team led by Garrison Development Team. We've been talking about this for a number of years. Before I got involved, CSU Pueblo initiated a campus master plan. And so this campus master plan talked about a variety of things that they would do for the university, but they also identified long-range partnership opportunities, areas around campus that are currently vacant and underutilized, and trying to imagine how that could be redeveloped to create a new gateway experience coming into the campus to potentially develop new housing for the campus, to attract commercial retail and hospitality to the campus. And really, I mean, this is a beautiful area of the city, and so how do you maximize that, you know, with a development vision? And so what started is that we looked at all of these vacant areas that are hollowed in purpose, so you can see. Oh, yes, we do have a whole pointer. You can see that you got the Colorado State University Pueblo campus all throughout here. And then all of these purpl shaded areas are parcels that were owned by CSU Pueblo that are currently vacant. And so that's really was our starting point. How do we identify which areas around campus might be the best or teed up the best for redevelopment, new development? And we identified about six planning areas around campus that was about 120 acres. And what we're doing is a market analysis to try to figure out, we have 120 acres. What could be built in the next 10 to 15 years? How much compact housing, apartments, townhomes could be absorbed in this area of the city in the next 10 to 15 years? How much commercial retail could be absorbed in this area of the city in the next 10 to 15 years? Could a hotel fit here? And what would all that look like? Well, it's one thing to say, you know, 50,000 square feet of commercial space. Well, what does that actually look like when you build it out? And so we started to identify certain areas as we were going through this density analysis, for lack of a better term. We came to the conclusion that these three planning areas are the best suited for new development. We have this purple parcel over here, 24 acres, that's around Walking Stick Golf Course, but the development team felt this could be a great parcel for selling and potentially creating a new residential subdivision around the golf course. And then these parcels would be retained by CSU Pueblo in this current concept, and would focus development and cluster development along Bonford. Which brings us to this conceptual development plan. Bringing moving those land planning areas in this market analysis I just described, what would that look like? And so when you take in some of these parameters of what could be absorbed over the next 15 years, working with SEH, or Civil and Engineering Group, and some architects there, and then being vetted by the development team, this development team came up with an idea that would include this residential subdivision over here, and clustering all this campus development right along the campus outside Bonford. So improvements to this infirmary, and then also bringing in, number one would be mixed-use development, walk-up retail apartments above. Number two could be a commercial pad, restaurant, brewery, if you're into that sort of thing. And then number three would be another walk-up retail, mixed-use development with apartments above. Four, quick-service restaurants or some type of drive-through. Five, a hotel. Six would be the student housing, multi-family development that would be clustered there. And finally, seven, these townhome apartments on the side of the campus. This is in to that development program. It's really campus-centric. And again, it's really just a conceptual plan. I'm not suggesting that this is the final base for all these uses, but it gives us an idea of scale, of massing, what this would look like around the campus. You need some concept images or precedent images that give you an idea of what those white boxes could look like if you were on the ground. So as you're coming into campus and you're driving up Bonford, or imagine something like 1A or 3. This three-story building, walk-up retail, something that's a very powerful image that defines the campus as the buses come in and drop off students there. You can imagine that some of the commercial retail pads, such as in Old Chicago, or some type of restaurant of that nature, being well on campus. A hotel similar to Hotel Maverick, I believe that's Mason, near Mason University in Montrose. That was one of our concept ideas for a hotel on the campus. And then finally, you have some improvements such as the roundabout cul-de-sac entry and townhomes and apartments. All of these precedent images are kind of guiding this development plan. So that was the vision, right? The idea of what could happen in the next 10 to 15 years, where it would be located around campus, but then comes, you know, putting the costs together, figuring out how do we make that vision feasible? And so the first thing that we did is we looked at infrastructure costs. And so we looked at the infrastructure costs related to the campus development, and also, and let me go back for just a second. Extended desert flower. Number 10, you can see Desert Flower Boulevard being extended and reconnect to the neighborhoods to the north. This is a critical piece of infrastructure, we believe, to making this whole campus vision a possibility. Right now, Desert Flower Boulevard on the side of campus doesn't exist. So how much would that cost? And then also, how much would it cost to do the surface transportation infrastructure improvements, to do the water and sewer infrastructure improvements to make the vision feasible? And what we did is we, again, working with engineers and getting the slide items, the summary is that the campus infrastructure total would be about $4 million. Desert Flower Boulevard Extension 3.8, bringing the whole total horizontal public infrastructure cost to about $7.8 million. And this is not something that CSU Pueblo can just write a check for. So that's why we're, again, talking to you, because we're trying to come up with a creative public financing mechanism that can help us pay for these public improvements, these horizontal improvements to activate the land and make this vision a reality. Which brings us to this public finance strategy. So working with Carolyn and the development team and talking to underwriters, developers, and bringing in some precedents that have existed within the city of Pueblo and up and down the front range, we believe that we can use these tools, a certain amount of tools, layer them together to fund this public infrastructure. We believe it would start with a metropolitan district, creating a service plan around these development areas where the metro district and not the university could issue debt to pay for the horizontal infrastructure improvements. You can collect property taxes in that metro district off of ground leases, possessory interest, and also if the part that put the parcel sells as a subdivision, that would generate residential property taxes. And then we would layer that by working with the Pueblo and City Council with an urban rural plan. That urban rural plan will give us access to property tax income financing. It could also help us with sales tax credit PIF, meaning a public improvement fee and potentially lodging tax credit PIF. Believe that stacking these public incentives on top of the metro district can achieve feasibility and can generate enough revenue that from a funding standpoint, it would exceed those public infrastructure costs. With that pause there, Carolyn is here to answer any questions about the legality around some of these strategies. And then Garrison and I can also take questions regarding the concept plan. I'm sorry that we went through so quickly, but I understand we didn't have much time to talk to you about this.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that presentation. I have a couple of questions. My first question is, I wish that Mr. Hobson was here, because several years ago, when I was in the Planning and Development Commission, there was a proposal to extend one of the little, like one of the streets right there in Waplin University Park down to Jerry Murphy. Do you remember? Oh, that's what Desert Flower is?
Yeah.
Where was that in the process? Because that was approved by P&amp;Z, like that was like years ago.
I don't know.
Counselor Martinez, yeah, that road has been, I believe, in the city's master plan for quite some time. I don't know that it ever received approval per se, but we have met with city staff on this road, because it's paramount to this project and winning. I don't think approval has been given just yet, but it's been in all your master planning efforts for the city of Pueblo.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Ortiz. I feel like we spoke about, I mean, this had to have been like three years ago at this point. And it came before P&amp;Z, and I thought that we approved it, but I think that was just for something really preliminary in the process. So maybe I'll follow up with Mr. Hobson to see what specifically, like what the case was.
Sure, I could be incorrect, but I believe Mr. Black was developing some duplexes a little bit further north of that neighborhood, and I think that was where the community was giving active input on that additional development. And there was a road up there, I forget the name, that had to be connected for both seats of access to be developed.
Yeah, like village circle or something.
Yeah, I think it was that. This road has been planned, but never before P&amp;Z for any specific approval just yet.
Okay. I'm curious for it, like if there's been any student involvement in terms of the needs or the wants in this plan?
Sure. Everything we do, the reason we exist is for students. This is really all for them. Student housing, which we're very excited about. We have a waiting list of 130-plus students in the walking stick apartments, and those apartments can certainly be elevated. So we think this will be a huge draw for prospective students, existing students, to stay here on campus. We have a lot of housing need that runs out of our campus, and so we think having standalone apartment units that are individual, give them their own privacy and their own security, is really going to be a big deal for students here. We have some committees established across campus. One of them specifically is an oversight committee. A lot of goes to move it, but not. But having more quick-service restaurants, there's going to be a big part for them. So she probably is putting on a cover back, I won the next couple of weeks, and that's a huge deal. But one thing, we don't have places to eat, I've been, as I say, and quite frankly, we just want a more engaging campus life, which you can see from these pictures, we don't want to just build, we want to build right. And then we want them to have the college experience that they really deserve and we think is attractive for the university students.
That's great to hear. That's a need. For the metro district, are you proposing that the new residential areas to establish a metro district there? Or can you talk a little bit more about that piece?
Thank you, Counselor Carolyn White. I was introduced earlier, but I hadn't spoken yet, so I just had to use my sound for the audio record. No, I think the exact structure of the metro district hasn't yet been determined. It may be that there would be two separate sub-districts to encompass the residential and the commercial. What we're doing right now is to initiate that process, and coming here before you tonight is really previewing the idea for you. But ultimately, whatever the proposed structure is of the metro district will come before you as a decision with a proposed service plan, with all of the details set forth, exactly what the boundaries are, what the maximum debt limit's going to be, and all of that. So I'll say that a little bit of it has to depend on how this conceptual plan shakes out and development that is selected to make sure that.
Just regarding, a couple of minutes to wrap up.
We like to keep people on our toes here. That's, I appreciate that. Thank you. And then lastly, to Mr. Mun, I want to say, welcome to Pueblo. I'm a proud Rami. That's my alma mater up there. So we're lucky to have you here. Welcome to Pueblo.
Okay, Councilman Flores.
Yeah, thank you for that. This has been about the second time. This is the second time that I've heard this presentation, and every time I'm learning as I go along, it's a pretty big project. For those people that are, well, since this is televised, obviously, this is a big project that involves not only, you know, the university, but the entire community, including their government. And obviously, there's got to be some sort of appetite to developers, and I'm curious as to how that process can be moved forward. You have a lot of ideas here, including a hotel, you know, lots of residential facilities, and then a lot of franchise, potential franchise restaurants, et cetera. What is the process in integrating the developers into this project? And if there's developers that are listening out there, how do they, who do they contact, and how do they go about making a connection with the university?
Thank you, Councilman Flores. Yes, as you mentioned, this is a big project. It's a heavy lift. Will require a lot of various approvals from all the taxing entities, but no governing board needs to grant more approvals than city council. From the metro district to the various taxing incentives in this package, city council will have the opportunity to really push this project along. That's why we're here to answer questions, and we'd really appreciate your support. The Board of Governors, as you know, is a previous CSU Board of Governor, Councilman Flores. We recently approved a resolution publicly that authorized us to begin the public process of creating an urban rural area, a metro district, and if needed, to issue an RFP to bring a master developer to the project. We're still working through that, because we have a lot of great interest already from several development groups. We've been given this roadshow quite a few times, and I'll just say, while respecting their confidentiality, that there is a lot of interest, and we feel very confident in our ability to pull this off. We have several letters of interest for various elements of the project already. Carolyn, I don't know if you wanted to comment on that any further?
We have two more councils. Mr. Latino, do you want to?
Thank you. Just thank you, thank you for your presentation. That's my area, and so I have a great deal of feeling for that particular area. I was also raised in that area. So I'm wondering, are you going to include and involve more of that up there in some of this planning so that they are aware of what's going on?
Certainly, there's a lot of stakeholdering that still needs to be done. I think we've done most of that internally with students and staff. But I am more than happy, Councilman Latino, to work with you and do some community outreach and get thoughts on what we're planning here.
That's great, because I have a community that's been established to do some other things. And we have a grocery store up on, off of 10th and where the Spaniel Roach School is. There'll be a grocery store going in there. And I believe there's the CEO, the national CEO of this particular organization tomorrow. Okay? And so, and it's important for you to understand that young people are going to be involved in this, and that the people in that upper, downline community are going to be involved in through, so they are aware of what's going on.
Very happy to rest with you. Thank you. Counselor Maestra, please.
We're ahead of schedule. I'm going to invite to hear from Ms. White. She had something to say, and she got surpassed by starting to answer, ask questions too early. So I'd like to hear what she has to say. I think I got it all out. It was just covered by the beeps, but what I was, what I was sharing was just that process for the metropolitan district. Whatever ultimately is approved is going to be your decision, because that service plan does have to come before you as city council to approve it. I don't know yet all the details. I don't know yet all the details of what we're going to propose to you of exactly how the service plan is going to be structured. It depends a little bit on which development partner is selected and whether the process is going to proceed in phases and whether we want to have separate districts for the residential and the commercial. But all of that will be coming back to you for your review and your ultimate approval um, at the appropriate time, we hope within just a few months.
Well, I'd like to have seen um, a met, you know, talk of a metro district with actually a plan behind it. Cause we've been approving a lot of metro districts, but nothing's, the trigger hasn't been pulled on anything yet. We have several throughout the city. But this is the most uh, planned community that I've seen of all of them. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, uh, Garrison. I saw the, I saw the uh, presentation earlier. Uh, it's, it's very, very uh, uh, good, to say the least. Right, you know, we sit up here, I sit up here specifically and for six years I say, we have to develop, we have to develop, we have to develop, whether it's residential, whether it's commercial. As a community, we have to develop. So I'm very excited that you're bringing this forward. I think that uh, the university has a dynamite plan moving forward. And I'm excited about seeing the, the uh, presentations go forward through urban renewal and any other things that, that happen. But I'm excited about this and uh, I think it's something that will be fantastic. Not only for the university, but most importantly, fantastic for the community. And that's what we're here for, is to do fantastic things for the community. And, and I like the way this is going.
Councilor Flores and then Councilor Martinez. Anybody brave? Uh, I just wanted to say that uh, this is a great idea for another reason. There's a lot of competition as to where students can go get their education. And in the old days, uh, you know, the, the model was much different, you know? Professors didn't care if you came or not, you know, that it was your loss. Today, there's severe competition, uh, and I like the idea. Uh, there's always been this theory that the university's up on a hill and it's not really then engaging with the community. What you're doing is bringing the community, uh, the university into the community, which is a great plan. Um, and I uh, and I, and I know that enrollment is such an important issue. This could have all of the makings of not only keeping our enrollment where it's at now, but also increasing it. And I think it's, it's a great uh, you know, girl issue. And then lastly, I just want to welcome again, uh, uh, Rico Mundor, our community. I, I had the honor of serving with him for four years on the Board of Governors. He was chairman and president one year, a couple of years, I think. And uh, uh, just again, uh, wanted to, the university is not skipping a beat with Rico. And we really appreciate you taking on this task in the interim and welcome again to Pueblo.
Councilor Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm curious about your timeline because you mentioned, you know, for metro districts, it would be a couple of months. Are you going to pursue that first before getting approval or, or like the Blight study from PURA? Or what's, what's the logistics timeframe?
We actually talked to the Board of Governors about pursuing all three paths concurrently. Meaning that we are immediately engaging on putting together the plan for the metro district. We're immediately engaging on the best method for selection of a development partner. And we're also initiating the PURA so that all of those things can go in parallel. And ideally, we would get them all to sort of land right around the same date and come back to you with a pretty complete package. Because they all inform each other and really it's too, it's hard to get too far down the road with one of them without the information that you really would garner from the other procedure.
Yeah, okay. That's a lot of work. So best of luck.
I think, I think our, our focus to have um, in our urban renewal area or areas created and metro district created by this fall. Um, and that's why we're working rigorously to um, sort through master developers and select a master developer. Um, here's sometime in the near future so that um, they can provide input on what these plans look like. Councilor Boston.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just think this is awesome. Um, you know, to hear that there's multiple developers and so many people that want to come and develop our community. And like Counselor Yelof said, uh, provide, you know, more commercial and residential development um, at the college. I just think this is awesome. A lot of the things I see here in this uh, concept would be things that I would have loved at the university when I was there just a few years back. So it's really exciting to see people that want to come to Pueblo and see what this community has to offer and help improve it even more. So um, I just have one question. Um, so I saw on the parcel that you were developing for the hotel and then it had one of the quick service restaurants. Is there any potential to possibly add more development to those areas in the future if once this plan gets executed?
Yes, the, the concept map that you see before you is, is very fluid right now. Um, it's going to change. Um, we actually had a lot of um, real mobile workshop a couple of days ago and I know it's going to change. And um, plenty of room for development. You saw the parcel just slightly uh, to the west. Um, but I think the master developer along with, with our desires is really going to drive what the final, um, the final map looks like, that. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Before we close, thank you, guys. City issues in my alma mater, so you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me here. Next up on the window is item agenda D, again fifteen minute presentation. Let's see, with Gina Maishy Council, City Council Independent Attorney Discussion with Gina Maishy, Carla Sykes, fifteen minute presentation. Thank you.
Chair, members of the council. Um, this is a presentation that I was requested to provide to you about hiring your own independent counsel. Had a discussion last year, probably about this time, about the, the topic. And um, right now, the charter is set up, so the city attorney is the only person that can hire outside counsel, special counsel. Otherwise, all legal work for the city is done through the city attorney's office. So city council has the power to adopt um, ordinances and resolutions. City council has the power to hire personnel to enable the council to adequately perform its duties. Um, but the law department exercises our legal and administrative function. Um, when it comes to uh, special counsel, our legal matters. So Pueblo is one of three cities in the state of Colorado with a strong mayor, city council form of government. Um, the other cities are Denver and Colorado Springs. Both Denver and Colorado Springs assign attorneys within their respective law departments to represent the legislative and the executive branch um, of a government. So originally, this uh, idea was proposed, it was proposed, um, before I was a city attorney. It was proposed when I was a mayor, to go across the city attorney. Um, and uh, when it was proposed then, there was some discussion about it. Um, but when we went to the strong mayor, council actually got a presentation from representatives of CML. And Colorado Springs came down and talked about this model and why it's important to, to do it this way. So that you have one legal department where the city attorney um, represents the city as a whole. If you wanted to do it now, it would require a charter amendment. One of the reasons why it is important the city's attorney's office represents um, city council and, and both of the legislative and the executive branches is because the city attorney's job is to represent the best interests of the city. We don't represent individual elected officials, don't represent individual departments. Our client is a city as a whole. Um, and we're a legal advisor to all of the departments, the lawyers, city council, city council members, boards, commissions, all the individual departments. Uh, I assign attorneys between the office to represent these different departments, boards and commissions. And so they all have their, their individual assignments. And we should all be giving individual team of advice um, to anybody that they're talking to. Every lawyer, my office exercises independent judgment. You know, we get standard advice. That's what our job is and that's what we do. So we do hire outside counsel. We have hired outside counsel within the last year since I've been here. Typically, that's when these complex or specialized areas of law. That would be something like water law, elections, um, something with that that is specialized. We also hire outside counsel if they lack adequate resources to handle a case. That would be something like litigation. Um, something that was going to be a big project that we don't have the attorneys to handle. If there's potential conflicts, you know, this may exist if there's claims against particular employees or elected officials, something like that. I don't believe we've had a, a situation like that, we, we want to share a little since I've been here. So there are concerns. If council wants to hire its own man, there are certain concerns that we need to talk about. Um, so first of all, conceptually, it's a little bit difficult. City council doesn't exist outside of the city. Um, so you're not really an independent body outside of the city. And so then, uh, you need to talk about who the client is going to be, whose interests this attorney is going to represent. Because now they're going to be representing the city council as a whole and not necessarily the city. Um, so that, that can be a problem. That can be competing legal opinions because of the difference in the client. So when it's for the best interest of the council, when it's for the best interest of the city. So you potentially um, have competing legal opinions. Uh, what's going to do all these until they get a resolution? What's a resolution going to look like? Uh, which is a, a potential issue of concern. Um, another area of concerns, if you even hire someone on contract basis, um, that person may not be readily available. Uh, my office is available to any day of the week. You can walk in and you can get answers. You can get access to documents, be there to answer your questions. That may not be the same if you have somebody outside of the city. And that person outside the city is not going to have ready access to city information or staff and isn't going to have the institutional knowledge um, you have within your office. So those are some potential concerns. The cost is also a potential concern. Um, we did this presentation last year. I estimated a cost at somewhere between two hundred and fifty or three hundred dollars a month. I can tell you after reviewing the numbers for last year, that estimate was really low. Um, so I've, I've increased the cost and this is probably what you're looking at um, for about fifteen hours a week is about three hundred and twelve thousand dollars a month paid to an inside of three. So as I said, charter amendment is necessary. Um, if city council wants to hire its own attorney, um, depending on what you decide, what role you want this attorney to have, that, that depends. That's going to dictate what areas of the, the charter that we need to amend. But apparently, most likely would be multiple areas of the charter that need to be amended. Um, we do have time. That's what you really do. We put it on a number ballot. Um, and we scroll back to getting that done, if that's what council wants to do. In order to come back with that ballot question, council needs to give a little bit of, of direction. So first of all, council needs to decide what authority and what this attorney, what, what role this attorney will be. Um, so that we can decide that. And then we decide how you're going to resolve conflicts if there's a conflict. Um, so those are the two questions that we really need to have answered to go forward. And um, that is my, my presentation. I'm happy to answer the questions that you need.
Councilor Flores.
You're ending the last, this is maybe the third time that we've tried this, by the way. And uh, uh, just a little bit of a background, uh, when we did it, I, I would believe it's probably close to five years ago. Uh, at that time, uh, our attorney um, gave us the green light to go ahead and put out an RFP, which we did. And the RFP uh, came back with uh, I think it was two, we got two submissions. And uh, it kind of died after that. I mean, it was um, it was kind of like uh, uh, nobody was really that enthused about doing that. And so then we tried it again, I think about three years ago, and we did put out an RFP and we got two submissions. And at the end of the day, uh, one very good, very, very reputable uh, law firm here in Pueblo, they pulled their, their, their bid out after they start looking a little bit deeper as to these conflicts that you've brought up. So we landed up with one person, uh, one attorney out of Pagosa Springs. And uh, I just, I, I think at that time, the council felt, you know, uh, this was not a good, he was so far away uh, that uh, we didn't feel that that was a good fit for Pueblo. So now we're going to be doing it for the third time and I, I've resolved myself that I don't think it's a good idea. Uh, I just think it's fraught with uh, uh, situation where uh, we're going to be pitting uh, you know, city council with your legal department. Uh, and, and I, I just don't think any good is going to cover this. And I don't think we're going to get much of a response if we do put an RFP. I just don't think that most firms, good firms, think that that's a good model. I don't think anything exists like that. But my question has to do with the difference in opinion from you and our, because we did have a form of mayor government, uh, the same government, uh, strong mayor form of government. And uh, so I'm, I'm curious as to why our legal counsel felt it was okay three years ago and today it isn't. And we're still under the same, same charter.
So I, I can't speak to what he thought um, at the time. Uh, there could have been a, a lot of different motivations as to why he, he gave the advice that he did. If he did an RFP, it was essentially going to um, still be bid through the city and, and bid through his office. I don't know about conflicts with the uh, charter. Um, so I'm not exactly sure what he was looking at. If you wanted to do an RFP and, and have special counsel, um, city attorney's office can still hire special counsel for counsel. Um, but uh, if, if what I'm hearing from you, what I've heard from meetings in the past is you want your own independent attorney that is not um, hired by or um, takes any direction from the mayor. So you want somebody that is completely independent. And to do that, you have to do that outside of the city attorney's office, outside of what the mechanisms we have now. So it's my belief that in order to do that, you would need a charter amendment. Um, I, I don't know why anybody else gave contrary advice unless they were just going to hire special counsel and tell them to work directly with city council, um, instead of going through their office. Um, you know, right now, we have attorneys that are, an attorney that is assigned to city council. Um, and essentially you have free access to him um, to have him draft your regi, your legislation, talk to you about legislation, talk to you about different issues. Um, so you have that access already. So I, I imagine that was probably the model that they were envisioning at the time. But they were going to do that with outside counsel rather than have someone in the office be in that role. But I, I don't know.
Might be instructed to kind of explain uh, Denver and Colorado Springs, their models are, they definitely have, Denver probably has twenty attorneys that answer to the city council and Springs probably has ten or twelve. Uh, and, but they do fall under uh, the mayor in both of those places. And they, they do work kind of like we're working now. Uh, but they have, they have so many attorneys working with city council people that they have their own autonomy to do that. But I, I don't see why we can't have the same autonomy with uh, uh, with our attorney. Uh, I'm assuming you were talking about Mr. Gifford.
Yes.
Okay.
And we do have that autonomy with Mr. Gifford. Um, so in Denver and Colorado Springs, I'm not sure what their hiring process is, whether or not those attorneys are appointed by the mayor if they're hired by the city attorney. I'm not sure of their exact hiring process. But it is under a very similar um, situation that we have here. So they have the city attorney. The city attorney assigns certain attorneys to represent different departments. City council is one of the departments that they are assigned to represent. Um, they have a much larger, larger office than we do. So it's probable that they have multiple attorneys assigned to city council um, based upon different subject matter, for instance. Uh, I don't know that for sure, but that would make sense. Here we have, because of the size of our staff, Mr. Gifford is assigned to city council. So he attends your meetings. He is your direct access if you have questions. Um, when I was before you, uh, last year, I developed a, essentially a guideline of ethics. So you could also see how that was played out in the office and how those assignments worked, how confidentiality worked. Um, so each of you can call Mr. Gifford or even if you call me and ask me a question. If it's confidential, then we're not going to disclose that conversation um, absent um, something that was going to negatively impact the city. So if we give you advice and we ignore that advice and we know you're going to do something that's going to negatively impact the city, then we need. then we need to bring it to the attention of the mayor or other elected officials. Um, but generally speaking, the conversations you have with us are confidential. And it comes down to drafting legislation. Um, but once the legislation is drafted and those conversations have culminated in an ordinance, then that ordinance is of course shared with the other offices and with the mayor's office. Um, and so that's the process. And, and those conversations goes for any director or, or the mayor when they call us, those, those conversations are typically confidential.
There's just one other point I wanted to make and, uh, real quickly here. And that is that if we went through this process, we probably wouldn't be on board with an attorney until summer. Uh, when we go through the whole RFP project, a pro- process. And it's possible that at the end of this year, you'll have four new city council people. It's possible that there's four of us, I definitely am coming off. And, uh, the other three, uh, may not get reelected. But I think if, if we're going to do something like this, the proper time probably would be after the new counselor. The new council is seated and that would be January one, which, you know, uh, they'd only be postponing that for six months if they thought that they wanted to go that way. But at this point, I'm against this. Can we, some history, please?
Um, so when we had this, this discussion last year, you asked, um, to give you six months, to give you six months, okay? And so what I was doing was I was bringing the question up at retreat because I hear a lot of rumblings and I just want to make sure that my counsel's okay with proceeding with Mr. Gifford. Or they're not, maybe they're interested in doing something different. So that was why I proposed the question at the retreat. We have seen not just the two RFPs that, um, council floors put out. We also saw a RFP when the mayor and I first got onto council. And those, uh, we learned, I learned during that time that those contracts um, are a monthly fee that they charge us, whether they work with us or not. And they all had added up to less than a hundred thousand a year. So I understand that that's today's rates, but when I looked at contractual lawyers working for municipalities and counties and so forth, they had like a flat fee that they would charge. Um, and so the one thing that I am noticing, not with just you as a city attorney, but with the whole time that I've been on council, that there are times that, um, there are some questionable things. And there's, council is the one who's signing off. They're signing off, they're being responsible for the decision. And yet they're having to reference back to the one opinion that comes from the city attorney. And I think that, um, from what I hear is that it's uncomfortable to make those decisions. If we have a ordinance that written, that's written for us and it's preempting state law and we have, um, went ahead and gone through with that without a second opinion, we're putting liability upon the city. Um, and that's not, you know, that's not good. But there was some things that I have seen since I've been on council that are very questionable. And then now even when we look at, like we say, we're looking at contracts that could be twenty years old, ten years old, five years old, that are still the same contracts in existence. And there are things there that a city attorney should have paid attention to the best interest of the city. And we're seeing that those, that is not happening. Um, those are not the best things for the city. And so council having been responsible for signing, whether it's this council or previous councils, um, I think that it removes a conflict of interest from what's being done. When everything comes from, you know, not everything, but when things come from the city administration that are wanting to be done, that are questionable by council, um, it seems like the advice coming across, and I'm not saying just from you, just from what I've seen, is always favorable as to getting that, giving us to pass those ordinances or those resolutions. And yet they're, there's, they're not as transparent as we would like them to be. Um, and I, I don't know if in the long run that they are best for the city. And that's just what I've seen. I don't know about the rest of council. Like I said, I hear the rumblings, you know, I'm, I'll speak up to see if we can, rather than the question being proposed, well, let's get an answer. And, um, and that's all I'm doing is representing this council and what's in the best interest of this council, council without the conflict of, by removing a conflict of interest.
Well, I appreciate that. I did ask that you give us six months to see how things were working. Um, I would appreciate it if there's a particular issue that you would bring it to so that we can talk about it. Typically when we talk about a particular legal issue or, uh, ordinances that are going to be passed, we talk in, um, risks. So we give you, we try to give you both sides of the issue. Um, if you want to do something, our city decisions are the decision of city council. So when an issue comes up, we may say, here's what you want to do. Here are the particular risks for this, if this is what you want to do and go forward. Um, here are some things that we can do. We usually try to change some things to reduce any risk to the city. Um, but ultimately our job is to bring forward those risks and you guys to assess them and say, is this something that we're, we're willing to accept this risk going forward? That this is a potential risk and we want to pass this policy anyway? Or is, or do we want to go a different direction? So we're not, we're not going to make those policy decisions for you. Um, and typically when we're giving an opinion, we're just learning what the law is. And here's the particular law, here's some particular risks. Um, but giving the law isn't necessarily, not in every case anyway. Some cases are very clear cut where we can say, no, that you can't do that. Um, but generally speaking, if you want to accomplish something and it's important to remember on the council or to the mayor or to a department, we're going to look at it, assess the risk and say, this is what you can do and we can accomplish it maybe this way. But here are the risks for doing, or here's some of the pitfalls. And then we're going to have to assess that and decide whether or not that's something you want to do going forward. Um, so, you know, we try to accomplish all of, all of the goals. Um, but there's many times when you say no, and it's a hard stop. Mm-hmm. So, uh, you know, that's, that's generally how we see our job is to try to accomplish the goals of city council within the law. Um, and sometimes that means that you have to assess those risks.
Okay, any else?
Go ahead.
Any others? We're good. Okay, thank you, Carl. Oh, so I'm sorry, Miss Matias.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I think that Staffman's direction, um, in order to move forward or not, I would, I don't want to move forward with this, Carla. I don't think that, um, the, the legal office has ever tried to sway us um, in one direction or the other, other than being, um, objectively, um, truthful and if you go this way, here are the consequences versus not. So I don't, I don't want to pursue this. I think that Counselor Flores is right when he said that this is going to do more than, than good.
Okay. Any other else, any other questions, comments? Thank you, Miss Matias.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. President, will you please read the resolution so we can get to the executive session, please? You go. Are we good? Are we going to go a direction to, uh? I'm sorry?
I, sorry, Mr. Chair, I said that they need directions.
And you'd like us to do, consider a constant consensus, uh, from the council and from the dais?
I believe that Ms. Sykes asked for council direction to see if we as a council are going to move forward with an outside attorney or not. No.
No, no.
Um, I think if council is willing to do that, I would be in favor of doing that.
That's it.
Yes, I would support moving forward with that.
I don't understand what the difference would be, so no.
Joe?
Same as, uh, feeling the same way that Brad.
There you go. Okay. All right, class, uh, President.
Uh, Mr. Chair, for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators under CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, paren four, paren E, paren I, and to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of any real, personal or other property interest pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, paren four, paren A, and more fully described as follows, to discuss the sale of commercial property.
Give us a second. Jane.
Are those?
Most in favor?
Um, I.
Most. We'll return back here at seven. Hope you're. Hopefully. Hopefully.